Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Political Science Department of the University of Scranton. My name is Patty Fowler and I'm the League's president. About Lackawanna County League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, which means that we do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. Our mission of the League of Women Voters is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation by citizens and government. We encourage you to join the League of Women Voters. Membership information can be found on the programs or you can go to our website printed in the programs at www.lwvlackawanna.org. We are an all-volunteer organization. Please support our work by making donations on your way out. Donations help us to cover costs, including taping, so that the debates can be viewed by a wider audience. ECTV is taping tonight's debate. The taped debate will be available on YouTube and via links from our website by tomorrow. This is not a live broadcast, however, ECTV will air the program on Comcast 19 local TV. It will also be shown by YouTube. Please check the ECTV schedule. A link can be found in your program. Every candidate here tonight signed a debate agreement that includes our audio policy as follows. No part of any authorized or unauthorized recording of this debate may be used or distributed by any person, candidate, campaign, or political group for any purpose whatsoever. You may provide a link to the ECTV video on your campaign website. Unauthorized recording is not allowed. To that end, we ask you to please silence and put away your phones and other devices now. Upcoming events. The most important event is Election Day, Tuesday, November 7th. Please don't forget to go vote. A sample ballot can be found at the Lackawanna County Elections website. Then join us for elections returns via live broadcast from ECTV. An interesting discussion about the elections will start prior to the closing of the polls. The program host will be Andrea Milrain. Tonight's debate is between candidates for Scranton School Board. I'd like to introduce our moderator, Jeanne Harris, from the Political Science Department at the U.
Thank you for joining us this evening, and I will share with you how we're going to proceed. So I will introduce each of the candidates with a brief bio, then I will ask the candidates' questions. All of the questions were developed by the League of Women Voters, members of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. The candidates have not seen the questions ahead of time, and all candidates will get the same questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Any time not used cannot be saved up for later, so the time is gone if we don't use it. In the front row, our member Denise will hold up a sign that says 30 seconds when there is 30 seconds left in the time to answer a question, and then when the time is up, she will hold up a stop sign. The candidate can continue with his or her thought, but then I will shut them off, close them down if they're going too long. Each candidate also has three opportunities for 30-second rebuttals, so after all candidates have answered a question, if a candidate would like 30 seconds to rebut anything that was said, they can just ask for a rebuttal. Each candidate will also then at the end have two minutes for a closing statement. Until that time, we ask the audience members to remain silent, don't show support or opposition, approval or disapproval, and at the end, after each candidate makes their closing statement is the time that we can applaud their presence here this evening. Also, I ask and remind you to shut down your phones or at least put it on vibrate mode. We drew straws before we sat up here to decide who would get the first question first. Mr. Tarquado is going to answer the first question first, and then we'll move down the table and Mr. Casey will answer the second question first, and we'll rotate in that order so no one is always answering first. We also drew straws to determine who would give their closing statement first, and Mr. Casey will be giving his closing statement first. So with that, I'd like to introduce the candidates for Scranton School Board. Mr. Casey is a Scranton High graduate. He graduated from East Strausberg College, sorry, East Strausberg, with a bachelor's in interdisciplinary studies. His political experience includes Scranton, a member of the Scranton School Board 2013 to present, and the NEIU Board 2015 to present. His civic experience includes a volunteer for St. John Newman Parish Picnic and the St. Patrick's Parade Lackawanna County Committee. He's a member on that. Professional experience, an auditor for Commonwealth Pennsylvania presently and customer service at Garrity's in the past. Barbara Dixon graduated from West Scranton High School. She has a BS in Business from Marywood and a master's in School Leadership from Marywood. Her civic experience includes being an advisor for the Future Business Leaders of America, an advisor for Student Council. She supported school involvement in many community programs, food drives, Angel on the Tree through the Salvation Army, Thanksgiving Feed of Family, and others. She also has participated in community events as well as fundraisers through the American Heart Association and Fight Against Cancer. Her professional experience includes 18 years as a teacher in the Scranton School District and 12 years as principal. She also was a business owner and supervised and implemented the operation of a restaurant, Station Square in Olivefont. Katie Gilmoreton, K through 8, she went to Abington Heights School. She graduated from Scranton Prep High School, and she has a BA in Theater Production from Fordham University. Her civic experience includes Scranton Area Foundation. She's on the Board of Governors. Women in philanthropy, an impact member, mentor, and co-chairman of the Entrepreneurship and Micro Lending Circle. She's also chairman of the Board for Scranton Shakespeare Festival, publicity chairman for the Society for the Preservation of the Tripp Family Homestead, a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. She's past president and a sustaining member of Junior League of Scranton, an ambassador for the Broadway Theatre League, and on the Advisory Council for the Ballet Theatre of Scranton, and RSV Penn Pal as well. In the past, she has served on the Board of Directors for Voluntary Action Center, a member of the Friendship House Guild, and an Everheart Associate, President for the Everheart Museum. She also was on the Steering Committee for Lackawanna County Cultural Plan. Professional experience includes Nadia &amp; Company, a partner in Nadia &amp; Company currently. Mark McAndrew graduated from West Scranton High School. He also went to Temple University and has teaching certification from Temple and the Culinary Institute of America, a culinary degree. Currently, he's a school board director, and his civic experience includes Cookies for Kid, I'm sorry, Cookies for Cancer Ambassador, Friends of the Poor Volunteer, and Black Sheep of West Scranton Member. Mr. Frank Tarquado graduated from Scranton Central High. He has also graduated from Towson University in Baltimore with a BS in Music and a master's from Wilkes University in Education. His political experience includes a run for school board approximately 20 years ago. His civic experience includes public schoolteacher, band director for North Pocono High, and he plays in bands with local musicians. He is a professional experience currently, he's a retired North Pocono High School teacher and former director of the district's marching, concert, jazz, and steel bands. So those are our five candidates, five candidates for four positions on the Scranton School Board. The first question, as I said, we'll start with Mr. Tarquado, and here's the question. What experience, skills, and abilities can you bring to the job that will make you a successful director?
Good evening. Thank you very much, Jeanne. I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and certainly ECTV for broadcasting this tonight, and the University of Scranton Political Science Department for providing this magnificent venue. It's beautiful, beautiful night here. What experiences do I bring? I have 30 years of experience in public school teaching. I've worked with kids for many, at many levels. For a year, I taught elementary school, elementary music at St. Mary's in Mount Carmel in Dunmore. I taught in the Scranton School District for two years in the intermediate level. That was several years ago. And the remainder of my career has been at high school, 9 through 12. Over the course of those years, I've learned the importance of how the school district, the administration, and the teachers, and the families, and the kids must work together. It's a system. Everything that's going to produce anything is going to be an effective system. It seems that Scranton is lacking some of that, and perhaps the leadership skills that I have developed through my career, I can bring to the table in the Scranton School District to enable us to, again, work better, to get the better ideas. A comment that I would like to make is about leadership, and many people have different ideas of what leadership is. I was asked several times, what do I intend to do? Well, how do I intend to fix it? Well, I don't intend to fix anything, but I think a good leader is not the person that has all the good ideas. I think the atmosphere, the environment, where good ideas can come from the people. We need to solve our problems with the talent that we have in Scranton.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Casey. What experience, skills, and abilities can you bring to the job that will make you a successful director?
Well, like Mr. Tarquado just stated, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the University of Scranton for allowing us to debate here tonight and get our message across to the voters on Channel 19 ECTV, and thank you to all of you who showed up tonight. For the last three and a half years, I've had the honor and the privilege to serve the city of Scranton as a school director, and within that three and a half years, I've served for the last three years as a representative on the NEIU 19 Board. And throughout that time, I could honestly say I feel like I've been one of the most independent voices, voting with and collaborating with each and every director that has come through the door, whether it be in Scranton or throughout the NEIU. That encompasses Lackawanna and surrounding counties, Susquehanna and Wayne. I was also, I also served on the NEIU Board's search committee to find our new executive director who we have in place now. And the NEIU, prior to my arrival, it was in complete disarray. There was issues monetarily, and, you know, we sat down with superintendents and board members to look for a correct leader to lead the NEIU into where it is today, where it actually has a surplus to operate with. And we just recently did a complete overhaul of our Jefferson Center in Dunmore where, you know, our special needs children are finally getting the equipment and the area to learn in which they deserve. So I feel that I bring a willingness to actually work together with people and not shut down when I don't agree with an individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
I as well would like to extend my thank yous to the League of Women Voters, ECTV, and the University of Scranton. I bring many skills to the table after, as Mr. Tarquado says, after 30 years in the public school system. 18 of those years, I taught business courses. My central focus in education was secondary. Many of those years, I taught accounting, and then the last 12 years, more importantly, I feel, has prepared me to be part of a team, a leadership team, on the board where I spent so many, I underwent so many types of training for research-based strategies, effective tools and curriculum, budget oversight. I ran a building of 1,000 people, and I had to bring together the school and change the culture of the schools that we were in. And the important lesson I as well learned is that everybody has to be a stakeholder. Everybody has to take ownership and shared common vision. And Scranton School District is at that point where I think we need to go back to a paradigm shift and shift that pendulum back so that we can find that common ground, we can talk to people, we can communicate, we can make effective reviews of policies, institute policies, and oversee, and be the watchdog for the district like we should be.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmoreton?
Thank you, Jeanne, and of course, thank you to the League of Women Voters and ECTV and the University of Scranton. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I think I bring certainly my business experience to the table. My parents opened our business in 1990 with a loan from a bank, and we've built something out of nothing over the last 27 years, and it isn't always easy. We do make difficult financial decisions and weigh pros and cons of everything we do, but our business isn't driven by the bottom line. It's a commitment to service and a quality product and being proud of what we're able to offer, and I think the same can certainly be said on a very different level and under very different circumstances of a school district. In addition to that, my civic experience, I think, is a tremendous asset. I am aware of how a Board of Directors is supposed to work, how we're supposed to operate, and certainly as a team, as many people up here have echoed, and how we should be working with the administrators, with the staff, and how seriously, how very seriously, our fiduciary responsibilities must be taken. So although I don't bring the educational experience that the other educators at this table and board members bring, I think being able to really know how a Board of Directors operates and an organization should function will be a help.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
I also want to thank all of you here tonight for coming, and especially the Women League of Voters. I've also had the great pleasure of almost four years serving citizens of Scranton on the Scranton School Board. I also have the pleasure of having students in front of me every day, and I get to see firsthand what their needs and interests are, what it takes for them to succeed, based on all the new mandates that are, you know, some are funded and some are unfunded, that the Pennsylvania Department of Education are rolling through, through all the districts. It has become this data collection or this data-producing environment that I can relate to the teachers. Also, being a teacher in front of students every day, I like to think that I'm more in tune in the trenches where, you know, not all the resources get, all the resources get to the students and the teachers on a daily basis or even on a yearly basis. So with that said, also, over the last four years, I've been an independent voice. I've asked the right questions. I'm a good listener. I come prepared. I do my own research. I rely on data and my gut to make the right decisions on behalf of all of you. I'll continue to do so if elected, one week from now, one week from tonight, and I thank you.
Thank you. The second question, we'll start with Mr. Casey. Based on the financial reality of the Scranton School District as documented by State Auditor General Eugene De Pasquale, describe two things you would do as a newly-elected school board director in a serious attempt to avert the state from taking over the operations of your school district.
Thank you. It's no secret that the Scranton School District faces tremendous financial difficulties, whether it be the doing of board members, administrators, or the state or federal level. The time for finger pointing has got to end if we're going to move forward. So two new things that I would like to do is, I came in late on the City Council debate, but I would love to form a committee with the city and even the county level for shared services, whether it be through mechanical work or purchasing. Something I always felt was needed in the Scranton School District is a centralized purchasing system rather than an individualized school system of purchases. It's no secret, and I'm sure the business minds in this room can understand that by in bulk, you receive a greater discount. It is something that we need to seriously take advantage of, including down the road, hiring a grant manager and a purchasing agent, two positions that can pay for their salaries within itself. And another thing I think we as a board, as a board member would like to push for is negotiations with our, with our unions. We've already had tremendous strides, and we've made tremendous strides with our maintenance and clerical union, but with the teachers' union, I think we seriously need to adapt a sixth period on a secondary level to schedule better. It's no secret when you run a business that scheduling is everything when it comes to personnel, especially when your budget is 80%, 75% to 80% personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Dixon?
I'm probably going to echo a lot of what Robert said, but first of all, not being in the position of a board seat right now, we're not, we're not privy to the actual status of where we are. However, just from my background, the first thing I would do, especially the situation that we're in right now, is to make sure that we review all of our current practicing policies and maybe adapt new ones to make sure that we move forward, completing our fiduciary responsibilities that we need to. I would sit with different departments and committees and the superintendent as well to make sure we were all on the same page in enforcing those policies. Budgeting has to be absolutely detailed, and it has to, we really need a multi-year budget, there's no doubt, but our monthly reviews have to be on time. They have to include detailed expenses, but most importantly, if we're over, adjustments have to be made throughout the year. Part of the problem in Scranton with the budgeting, being a principal and having to be in charge of those budgets, we are on a calendar year budget. We're one of two districts. The school's funding comes in on a fiscal year. The calendar year goes from January to December. Fiscal year goes from July until June. It's very difficult to juggle those anticipated expenses throughout the year when you're doing your budgeting in December. So that's something that we're going to have to overcome. Also, like Robert said, we do need central purchasing. I know for a fact, when we were doing our budgets at building level, I can't even imagine for the entire district, there's a lot of wasteful spending. People want to buy everything on their own, and we need to do central purchasing and mass purchasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmoreton?
Thank you, Jeanne. I agree with Barb. It is very difficult to sit at this table as a new candidate and truly identify the priorities when you don't have all the information at your fingertips. That being said, I think following the recommendations that we're receiving, certainly from the Auditor General's report and from the PFM report, in reading those, I noticed that a lot of the, especially the PFM recommendations, were very much in line with the strategic plan. A lot of things that have been mentioned, and even more mentioned at the board meeting the other night, were in there. So I think it's a matter of really going over all of those recommendations, really deciding, I've heard from several different sources, that they need to be put into three categories. What can we absolutely do right now? What is able to be tweaked or negotiated? And what is something that really isn't a good fit for our district? And I think if we go through those lists and define our priorities together, we can start to chip away at this. And I, I think it's important that we are following our policies and procedures. I say it all the time, I am a broken record, but I love policies and procedures, and reading all of this, I don't think I'm wrong.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew? Sure. Based on the financial reality of the Scranton School District as documented by the State Auditor General, describe two things you would do as a newly-elected school board director in a serious attempt to avert the state from taking over the operations of your school district.
Well, the first thing, two things we should actually do is embrace the report and embrace the PFM recommendations. So within them, within them two recommendations, I know that we've somewhat renegotiated the busing contract, but I think we need to find a way to recoup some of the, some of the money that we lost, not, you know, some of the money that we're going to save through the existing contract. I also think we need to open every contract. Any service provided to the district has to go out to bid, with no exceptions. Another issue that drives me crazy since I'm on the board is, you know, we have contractors that come in and bid work, and then all of a sudden, you know, we take the lowest bidder, but then we end up paying either twice as much or almost twice as much on change orders. We need to attack, attack this because this is a huge problem that doesn't go as notice as all these, all these other things that were brought to our attention. So we need to change the policy we have in place. You know, if there's a change order, we don't pay for it. You know, if you build a house and they want to change something, you know, you have to agree upon it. We just automatically pay it. So anyone that would violate that, we just wouldn't do business with them anymore. Maybe something else besides that, I know you asked for two, but we have 13-plus buildings. There's no inventories that are ever, ever, ever taken, so we don't know what we have. We need to put an inventory system in place which would help with regards to spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tarquado?
You asked for two things that would happen. The last report that we just received from the Auditor General from De Pasquale was crushing. It was crushing for the morale of the district and for the people of the city of Scranton. I think, I think there are, there are drastic, cuts need to be made. There's no question about that. How they're going to be made is the question. So the two things I'm going to suggest, I'm going to put a little spin on the answer here, we have to change the culture in our district, and we have to change the ability to trust each other in our district, because what's coming down the road is going to need a new approach. So we have the people, we're paying many people in our district. We have many administrators, 40, some 45 administrators, and we have some 750 teachers in our district. The answers are there. The answers are there. Good answers are there. Creative answers are there. Is the will to do what we need to do there? I don't know. That's what we have to find out. But we will find out because the cuts will be made. So our choice now is, do we make those choices the way we want to make them, or do we turn it over to the state and get what we get? Now, I guarantee you, they will balance the numbers, but it might not be in such a way that our children are going to benefit. We also have to keep in mind that every single thing we do in our district is geared for those kids and what happens in the classroom. I was very fortunate, in my first year of teaching, I had two wonderful principals, Mr. Al Karam and Mr. Joe Caputo. They were very talented and educated men, and they were great teachers, and they helped me a great deal at the beginning of my career. I also ended my career with a great principal, Mr. Ron Collins at North Pocono High School. He did fine educators. The point I learned from Mr. Caputo is, everything that happens in the district is where the student and the teacher meet. Everything else in this district supports that or shouldn't be done. So that's how we need to approach this. We have to establish the culture of trust where teachers and administrators and staff can sit together and decide, how are we going to make these difficult cuts? People say, "Don't say cuts." Cuts need to be made. How are we going to do that? And hopefully, I will be able to bring that leadership to the new board. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Dixon. Share with us, and young families considering moving to, staying in, or leaving the Scranton School District, share with all of us your assessment of the quality of education provided by Scranton Schools, and on what evidence you make your assessment.
Scranton School District was always one of the cutting-edge districts in our county. The quality of teaching that we have within every building that I've supervised and with the colleagues that I worked as a teacher certainly speak volumes. To judge how the quality of education, it's not only the test scores. That all started back in 2000. We, we have to judge the overall experience that the students receive when they're in the classroom, when they're in the building, their success, the things that they get involved in. And I think if you're coming into Scranton School District, the one thing that a parent would want to see is, is a solid school district that is running efficiently. And right now, I think that's, like Mr. Tarquado said, I think we need to change the culture. So I think this board is tasked with not only changing all of the financial problems, but also the culture of the district. But Scranton School District, they could come on site in any school on any day and see it in action. We have great teachers and great administrators.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmoreton? So share with us, and young families who are considering to move into, stay in, or leave the Scranton School District, your assessment of the quality of education provided by the schools, and also indicate what evidence you make that assessment on.
I agree with so many points that have been raised this evening, and I think what Barb says about the quality of our teachers and administrators is right on, and what Mr. Tarquado says about changing the culture is absolutely the truth. These students and teachers and all the stakeholders in the district deserve a Board of Directors as dedicated and hardworking as, as they are. And in my, in one of the most wonderful things- And in my, in one of the most wonderful things I've done in this experience is visit the schools because I didn't have experience with them. I was not a student of the Scranton School District. And to see the buildings and to talk with the principals and to get to peek into classrooms was, was a wonderful treat. But the other day, I was at Prescott Elementary, I was invited to come to their Halloween parade. And at one point, I turned the corner and seated behind Ms. Knight in her sequined regalia, having a snack on the wall, was the most beautiful woman of Indian descent in the most fantastic turquoise sari I've ever seen. And all of these children around in Halloween costumes and I was truly overwhelmed by the beautiful sight in front of me and by the community that existed with this school as its hub. And I got to see a few other Halloween parades this week as well, so I know Prescott is not alone, but it is, that, that is what really we are bringing to this community and it's important that it's well-supported.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, with regards to... Thanks. That's all right. With regards to quality education, I believe we provide quality education in the Scranton School District. There's, there's no doubt in my mind. I see firsthand, I work at the Career Technology Center where I have students from eight or nine ascending schools and, you know, the majority of the students that, that come through our doors are from Scranton and West Scranton. Are they prepared? Yes. Could they be prepared better? It, it depends. Well, how I, how I see it is, is the roadblocks that we have is, we have, we speak thirty-some different languages within the district. So, you know, to base test scores on, on them students that are tested also isn't fair. So it might not look like quality, but, but I believe, you know, we have great teachers in the district, we have great instructional leaders in every building. I think some of the hurdles are, once again, resources getting to the teachers that need them with these struggles, you know, whether it's differentiate instruction or help with these languages. So in closing, I, I believe we have, we have great, a great quality education in our district. I just think, to, you know, come across better or to look better, we need to, you know, provide the resources so we can achieve that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tarquato, and thank you for sharing the microphone at the end of the table.
Yeah, here.
May I ask you to...
Yes. Share with us and young families considering moving into, staying in, or leaving the Scranton School District, your assessment of the quality of the education provided by the schools and on what evidence do you make your assessment?
Well, the, the quality, the, the potential for outstanding education in our schools is second to none in the area and I base that on the fact that as a, a music teacher at North Pocono, we have a Region Nine band, District Nine band, and I have the opportunity to sit and audition students from, I think it's 26 different schools that are in that area. And I could tell you, the students that appear there from Scranton are every bit as good as the students in any other district, there's no question about that. Now, some other districts may have more students end up with representation on the bands because it may have to do with the quality of the consistency of their programs, but I'll tell you, what we have as students are magnificent. The, the, the diversity of our area is, should be used as a strength. It needs to be used as a strength, it's not a weakness, it presents certain challenges. But we have to customize what we do for those kids. Every kid that appears in a school is the best kid that that parent had to send. That's the, that's the wisdom I received from Mr. Collins. He said, "Remember every day when you're teaching, that every parent sends you their best kids." And it's our job to get that kid from where they are, to reach their, to find what their potential is and to reach that. Our district absolutely can do that. We have the people in place. I don't think it's functioning at that high a level right now, but I think maybe one of the good, maybe one of the good points of this disastrous report, if there could be a good point, is that there is now a deadline and we will act rapidly. All, drastic change like that shouldn't happen so rapidly, it should happen cautiously. We no longer have that luxury. So we're going to need to call on all the resources that we have and everybody muster with the best answers that they have to get to where we need to be. I'm a product of the district, so maybe, I don't know, maybe I just criticize that it's a good, the quality education in '73 is, is what you're seeing before you. I think we certainly have at least that or better now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
Thank you. I, I feel that I am the best individual up here to answer this question, seeing that I just came through our district and graduated in 2008. If you just look at the programs that we offer within this district, I mean, we have an amazing chorus program, the Night Rhythms. They perform nationally in front of our presidents, political candidates, and it's something that is always brought back to us and said, that is one program that we have to champion and that I will continue to champion if I'm lucky enough on next Tuesday. Our speech in debate, winning state titles in 2007 when I was a student there, we have graduates who, I don't know if many know, but John Oliver, he's a producer, he created that, you know, that beautiful segment, whether some think it's a slap in the face or not, but the train. We have people doing amazing things that come from Scranton High. And I come from a home where my mother was an ESL teacher in the south section, southside section of Scranton and it has always been something that I understood since, you know, I went to Nativity Elementary in the southside section of Scranton and I had an opportunity to go to Bishop Pannon before it turned to Holy Cross, Scranton Prep, or Scranton High School. And I sit here before you today as a graduate of Scranton High School, saying that I made the absolute correct decision because I knew individuals that graduated from those other two schools and neighboring districts. Is the morale down? Absolutely, the morale is down. That's why we need to find leadership who can build that up and continue to progress forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Gil-Martin. Ms. Gil-Martin. The Chief Financial Officer of the School District will retire in December. Describe three criteria you, as a school board director, will want the applicants to possess.
Pardon me, thank you. Obviously, strong financial background, integrity, honesty. I'm going to run out of three. But I, I think someone who is conscious of all the layers of the district and all the moving parts and can run a, a strong office. That was one of the points that was raised at the board meeting the other night, that perhaps the financial needs of this district are not being met by the, not by the individuals in place, but by the roles that are in place and that the job descriptions need to come up to meet the standards that, that we need to meet in terms of the, the financial obligations.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew. The Chief Financial Officer of the School District will retire in December. Describe three criteria you, as a school board director, will want the applicants to possess.
Well, first of all, I think the sense of urgency we've been put under with regards to the report and, and being under watch, I would first of all like to rely on someone who, who's in the mix right now or grow one of our own who understands where we're at. Not to bring someone in, you know, that doesn't even have a clue of, of our situation. So number one would be, I'd like to grow, grow one of our own who understands where we're at, where we need to be. Secondly, of course, you know, someone with a great financial background and experience and, you know, willing to make, you know, to meet the challenges that we're faced with.
Thank you. Mr. Tarquato?
Well, I think we have maybe our first point of, of contention here. Obviously, we need a, first and foremost, a person of high integrity. It must be a, a person with honesty beyond reproach. I think it has to be someone that, as I spoke of trust before, that other people will know from their background that it's a person they can trust with their money, that the people, the taxpayers trust the person, but the people receiving the information that are going to deal with it in the school board are going to, are going to, need to trust that person and know they're giving good information. Obviously, they need to be a spectacular accountant. They need to see things around corners too. The point of contention is, I don't much, much care where they come from. I, I don't care if it's a homegrown person, I don't care if it's somebody we fly in from Wyoming, it, it makes no difference to me because first of all, numbers are numbers. Now, each person has their own job in the district and the, the CEO is the person who, who makes sure that things are in the right columns and we're doing it properly. We will be able to figure out what we need to do and how we're going to need to do it. That person will oversee the numbers in, certainly in cooperation with the solicitor and with the superintendent, so they understand the school law, they understand that we're meeting all the commitments that we need to commit. But basically, it's, it's the honesty, integrity of, you know, who's, who's keeping their eye on the pennies. Another local icon, Mr. John Bernetti, once said something brilliant, "Watch the pennies and dollars take care of themselves." And, and he seemed to do well with that with his business, so possibly we could draw on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
There were a lot of adjectives described towards our potential new CFO, but there's been one adjective that's been missing and that's someone who's going to be assertive, someone who's going to sit in the back room or in the boardroom and tell us, "This is what you need to do to begin to move towards solvency." We need more people to tell us the reality. I mean, it, it shouldn't be that way, but for too long it has been that, where board members have for, done away with the advice of individuals from the administration in that office. We need, I, I don't care, like Mr. Tarquato said, I don't care if it's someone who has a familiarity with the district or not. I would like to honestly see someone from outside the district who is not clouded at all with the previous report that just came out. And it, it does have to be someone who you can trust as a board member that, hey, I'm, I'm getting the best information to move the district possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
I would like to see someone that takes over in that office actually be a CPA with the focus in school finance and to be experienced and that will work with the board as a team and give us the leadership from the financial perspective that we need.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. McAndrew.
Excuse me, before I go with that, may I, may I have a short rebuttal?
Sure. Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. I just want to set my opinion a little bit apart from Mr. Casey's in that he said he wants someone there to tell us what to do. I think that we would know what to do. I want that person to tell us, "You don't have the money to do that." Or, "You can do this much of, you can spend this much money," but then we need to be creative and decide where to do it. So the financial officer really shouldn't set policy. So we have to, and, and again, those are the incredibly tough decisions that have to be made, but I think I could help make them. Thank you.
Thank you. So this next question, we'll start with Mr. McAndrew. State Representative Will Tallman has proposed a bill, House Bill 950, that would eliminate strikes and establish a strict and transparent timeline during contract negotiations. Do you support such legislation? Please explain your support or your opposition.
To be honest with you, like I said earlier, I, I'm a guy who, who likes data put in front of me, research put in front of me before I formulate an opinion and, and give you my opinion. So the bill you speak of, I'm not familiar with. I would have to take a good look at it, research it, digest it, and then I, I would be able to give you an honest opinion how I would feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tarquato?
Once again, this is a, this is a difficult answer because I am a pro-teacher person. I've dedicated my life to teaching and it's been a blessing to me that I've been able to work with young kids my entire life. I am pro-teacher. It seems to me that the ability for teachers to strike needs to be looked at, readdressed, and reformulated because it is not a fair system as it sets in place, as it sits right now. I have some very different ideas. I like the last best offer idea and I like a deadline. I allow, I'm a, I'm a libert, in, in many respects, I'm a libertarian. I think that, that there should be unfettered negotiations, but I think at some point, there's a line drawn and I think a last best offer where someone comes in and decides, okay, we'll take this or that. And I, I think strikes should be avoided that way. I, I have to tell you, I'm not completely familiar with the particular legislation, so I can't speak to that. But I think certainly there needs to be a, a, a change in how the, the strikes are, are called at this point. I would also like, I would also like to make a plea to my friends, many of my friends that are teachers in the district, and I understand they took a, a vote to strike and I certainly support their rights to do that. I would ask them to seriously, seriously reconsider adding any more confusion or putting any heat on the fire that we have now. We need to fix this and I promise you that I would listen to all of the, the wishes and the desires of the teachers, every single last one of them, and I would compare that to all the other needs that the district has. But I would ask that they reconsider that vote and that move at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casey. So the question is, would you support legislation to eliminate strikes and establish strict and transparent timelines during contract negotiations? Would you support or oppose and why?
As for right now, without having, like everybody up here said, I, I would have to oppose it without better familiarizing myself with it. But to speak in terms of the Scranton School District, I think this is such a big question due to these strikes, not only in Scranton but in, in surrounding districts. We need to have better relationships with our unions, whether it just be in negotiation form or in grievances. Scranton has faced so many grievances because of administrators not being able to, whether it be in central administration or in, in our brick and mortars, being able to follow the contract. And that comes back to the responsibility of the board to make sure that the administrators in central admin, make sure that the principals know what the contract is so that it's not being broken and it comes back to thousands of dollars in lawsuits. That is something that many directors have been frustrated with and I'm hoping that as we move forward with our next contract, it is something that we can correct, whether it be through the summer trainings or discipline, whether, that has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Ms. Dixon?
Can you read that again?
Sure.
I'm the last one here. No, you're behind me.
Sure. So currently, there is a proposed bill that would eliminate strikes and establish a strict and transparent timeline during contract negotiations. Would you support or oppose this kind of legislation and please explain why?
I'm not familiar with the legislation, so I'm going to base this on my experience walking the strike line as a teacher, being on the other side as an administrator. There's a lot of, from the time I left till now, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into us getting to the point of striking. First of all, I, I, striking doesn't help anybody. It doesn't help programs, it doesn't help kids, doesn't help teachers, doesn't help their paychecks. We have to improve the relations and the communications all around. We have administrators, as Robert just said, I was an administrator for 12 years and I had zero grievances because there's a contract there and you have to respect the contract that's in place. So I think if we provide the necessary training to the administrators and we all work within the contents of the contract that's agreed upon, when it comes time to renew that contract, that we can do it in a reasonable time to avoid the strikes.
Thank you. Ms. Gil-Martin?
I was actually at a forum last week. At, thank you. Not about working microphones, obviously. I was at a forum last week presented by Marywood University regarding this exact matter. I heard Representative Tallman speak on the bill and I don't support it. That being said, the discussion that ensued was very informative. Many of the, the other layers of the bill are good practice. The timeline seemed sensible, eliminating loopholes that might limit negotiations certainly seemed like a good idea, but after all of the information was presented, I, I couldn't say that I supported the elimination of the ability to strike. But I do also want to share that I, I think the opportunity to learn, much like tonight here at the University of Scranton, presented by Marywood University, was, it, it was an astounding opportunity and I think can be an asset to our district. We have all of these wonderful resources right in our neighborhoods and it was a fantastic learning experience. I came away with pages and pages of notes and lots of things to continue to... I came away with pages and pages of notes and lots of things to continue to research, and I feel fortunate to have had the experience and to be able to speak on it with some knowledge here tonight.
Thank you. So, at this point, we will turn to closing statements from our candidates, and Mr. Casey will go first with his closing statement.
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone again, the League of Women Voters, the University of Scranton, and all of you here tonight and watching on ECTV. Like I said before, I've been honored to serve as a school director in the city of Scranton for the last three and a half years. I grew up in the East Mountain section of Scranton. I graduated from Scranton High School in two thousand and eight, and I am a graduate of East Stroudsburg University. I'm a representative on our NEIU board where I get to meet and collaborate with other board members throughout the surrounding area, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the ability to speak with other board members on a nightly basis about new ideas and innovations and that they're implementing in their districts. As a board member for four years, or three and a half years, sorry, in Scranton so far, I've been outspoken on issues when I've needed to be. I've went against the grain, I spoke out against our hiring policy with our superintendent, I've spoken out against the globe store sale through the county, releasing taxes from our rolls, and I voted against our budget last year because frankly, borrowing from a healthcare trust, and I know it's a taboo thing to vote against, but a non-tax raise when you're this much in debt and not addressing the real issues that have been recently, not recently discovered, but brought up again, is only hindering the progression of this school district. I'll say it again, I've been an independent voice, and I've been willing to speak and talk with each director, whether it be in Scranton or throughout the county, and work with them and have an open mind, and on November seventh, I'd humbly appreciate your vote on the Democratic ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
I would like to thank everybody as well for having, for hosting this and having us here tonight. It was a great opportunity to be able to discuss our viewpoints and actually discuss amongst each other. I was a product of Scranton School District, and I invested thirty years of my life in Scranton School District. I truly care about the district itself, that's one of the reasons I ran. There's ten thousand students depending on the next board that is going to take place in these difficult times, and that board has to form a leadership team to lead the direction. I feel I have the experience between teaching with the business and my administrative experience in program, oversight, curriculum, budgeting, supervisory, I'm well-versed in the contracts, in all of the contracts that are involving in our school district. I've written policy for Scranton School District. I know the policies in Scranton School District, and I feel that I could be an asset as part of a leadership team, and we have to roll up our sleeves, meet the deadlines, and we have to worry about getting the best education for these ten thousand students the best way we can.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Gilmore?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is another wonderful experience. I cannot tell you how much I've enjoyed all of this. Everything I've learned is, it's inspiring, to say the least, and the challenges ahead are certainly daunting, but I feel confident that we are demonstrating here tonight that we can work as a team, that we all bring, we bring different resources and experiences to the table, and that's what a board of directors is meant to be. We need to do our homework, we need to be prepared for our meetings, and we need to listen and communicate with one another and respect one another, and work to support, as Barb said, the ten thousand students in this district. They are our sole focus. And I am excited to get to work. I am grateful for everything that has come out, certainly not for the circumstance, but I am grateful to be armed with all of that information. I feel as though we have a blueprint, and we can go up from here. So, I can't thank you enough for your support in the primary, and I hope I can count on you again on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore. Mr. McAndrew?
Once again, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight, the Women League of Voters. I also want to thank, because if I don't, I'll be reminded of it, my beautiful wife, my three beautiful daughters that I've put up with, you cannot even believe, over the last three and a half years and the next week. But I want to stand on my record, I'm going to be brief as possible, I'm going to stand on my record, I had no problem, without hesitation or intimidation, voting no when it's the right vote for all of you. And one example is the bus contract. I know it keeps coming up, but without hesitation, I voted no to extend it. Reason being, we could have got, you know, more optimal savings, first of all, and not have to go what we're going through now, trying to get some back or not getting some back, or how long is it going to be? So, there's tough choices ahead. Am I prepared to make them? Absolutely. I'm an independent thinker, like I said earlier, but you know, come December, there's going to be a new board, there's going to be a new makeup. I believe that we have to continue, or at least follow what the vision of the district was supposed to be, you know, transparent state communication collaboration. Is it happening now? No. Do we need to get better at it? Yes. With that said, in closing, I don't report to anybody inside the administration building, I report to all of you. When I mean all of you, that is the taxpayers, the stakeholders, and the children of our district. I love my district, and I love my city, and I'd be honored to serve you four more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Mr. Torquato?
That's very good, thank you very much. And again, I want to thank you, Jean, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters, certainly ECTV and the University of Scranton Political Science Department, you did a wonderful job in this beautiful venue. This is an example of what our city should and could be and where we're headed. Certainly, thank you to all of you who took time to come out tonight, and I must thank my beautiful wife, Michelle, my son Franco, my daughter-in-law, Leslie, my beautiful daughter, Sarah, and my entire family for all the help that they have given me. I also have consistent support continually all the time, I'm very blessed. I would like to thank all of my fellow, I don't want to call them opponents, our fellow candidates on the D S today, I'm honored to be here with you also. So, I'm going to ask everyone, if you have time, to please go to Torquato 2017 on your Facebook page, Torquato 2017. I have a blog, and I like crank stuff out there, and it'll let you know what I'm about. If you think that you're interested in that, I would ask you to please share that with your friends. You know, the people who don't vote decide most of our elections, that's tremendously bad. I need to tell you that it's almost impossible for me to win this election. When you look at the logistics of the election, it's almost impossible for me to win. I won't win because I have better yard signs or more yard signs or fancy sponges that, you know, blow up when you put them in water and stuff. That's not going to happen, because I don't have any of those. But I do have a blog, and I spoke to you this evening, and I have a very strong desire to help our community and the students in our community, especially the students in our community. So, if, again, if you would honor me with the consideration of doing that much, and then if you thought that I was worthy of your vote, I would humbly accept that, and I would promise to serve as best I could, to the ability that I could, to try to bring that trust and honesty and integrity and make Scranton School District what it is intended to be. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Torquato. And I just want to thank you all for joining us this evening. Remind you to vote on Election Day, November seventh, and you'll be able, you'll have the opportunity to vote for four school board candidates to join the Scranton School District School Board. So, don't forget to vote on November seventh. Thank you.